Good evening. Welcome to the March 9, 2016 zoning board of appeals. Stand for allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Thank you. We have a roll call.
Mr. Hebert?
Present.
Mr. Richard?
Present.
Mr. Crockett? Mr. Sh- sorry, Ms. Shoup?
President.
Mr. Stark?
Here.
Mr. Maroon?
Here.
And Mr. Blaze.
Okay. Thank you very much. Agenda needs to be switched around a little bit, just to let everybody know. First of all, per the comments from the code enforcement officer, we'll reverse 2568, put that into second position, and 2567 will become after that. 2566 will stay in the same place, but we do want to also add another item to the agenda, which would be recognizing Mr. Loizell for his chairmanship and time on the board. And he's here today. What I'd like to do is welcome him as a regular citizen again. And thank him for the fantastic job he did as chairman. And we've got a- can you come forward, sir?
Take a podium, Mr. Chair.
Yes, you're welcome to take a podium if you'd like. Whatever you want, you can say.
No, he was waiting for you to go present.
Oh, I'll bring you over here.
Oh, why don't I come up to you?
So here we have on this day, we've got an appreciation for your service to the town of Scarborough Board of Appeals Chair 2014. He's been on the board since 2006, by the way, and very, very, very knowledgeable board member. Unbelievable value. Rick, as friend-
Thank you. Thank you. I believe this goes with the key to the city, right?
Yeah, we have a combination code. We'll give you the number later.
Thank you. Good luck to everybody on the board.
This has been a historic week. Peyton Manning retired, and so did you.
Ah, you got a plaque. But honestly, for everybody that just pays attention, this is a- anybody that does anything to the town with the town, they don't get paid. They do it because they choose to, because they love the town, and they want to make a difference. And Rick is the epitome of that. He was driving from Wood-
Woodland?
Woodland, which is a two and a half hour drive, four.
Three and three and a quarter.
Well, it's the same way I drive. It's about two and a half when I drive, it's four when he drove, to come to meetings. That's how dedicated he was. And he chaired a fantastic chairman and fantastic as far as his depth of knowledge, and brought a lot to the table, as has many of the members over the years. Thank you, sir. You can go home, as I promised you.
Excellent. Thank you. Finished paving the ceiling I was working on. Thank you, Rick. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Rick.
Good luck.
Okay. So if we get back to the approval of the minutes for January 13th, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Minutes. Second.
And discussion on the motion. Seen none, all in favor? That's three is the end. You don't have to pause it, you can actually, you can actually-
I wasn't there.
You can actually, either way. Okay, that takes care of that. Let's jump right into appeal number 2566. It's a variance appeal by Beth Schisler, 48 Bayview Avenue, such as map U1 parcel 107. And I just told Ms. Longstaff about what I thought of his comments on this appeal. And I appreciate the work, your team, you and your team, that just the way you've translated it to English, because it's an interesting appeal. Thank you.
What did I say?
Well, actually, you said-
Did you want to recognize voting members?
Oh, yes, that's true. Both yourself, you'll be voting members, we'll have one, two, three, four, five, so everybody will be voting tonight. So just make sure where's that? The model is typically just for you here. Anybody on the board, alternate or not, we look forward to speaking, asking questions, looking for answers. We also expect you to vote, even if you're only an alternate at times. Even though your vote doesn't count, it gets the rhythm, it gets you used to the practice, it makes it a little bit easier long-term, but tonight you're actually voting for real. And so, tip right in, okay?
Got it.
All right. Good night, sir.
Evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jim Fisher with Northeast Civil Solutions, here this evening representing Ms. Beth Schisler, who is with us this evening. And also joining us is the architect, who designed this very cool-looking house, or will be a cool-looking house. That's Robin Tannenbaum. So in the interest of brevity, I'll try to keep my little presentation very short, but if you do have any architectural questions, then Robin will certainly be free to come up here. And then obviously, if you have any specific questions to Ms. Schisler, she'll also be able to answer those. First, I'd like to say, a quick comment with Brian earlier, no meeting last month, and you haven't seen me in several months. So obviously, the form-based code for Higgins Beach, anyway, is working the way it was intended. Very cool. It's nice to be able to know that something is working quite well from the get-go. However, it doesn't apply uniformly to all projects. And one of the reasons that we're here this evening is that we have a request somewhat similar to the request that brought myself and others before you in the past, especially regarding Higgins Beach. The form-based code, essentially, as you're well aware, essentially is written toward lots that are relatively uniform at around 50 by 100, thereabouts. There's obviously flexibility down there, but most of those lots pretty much are that way. There are several notable exceptions. This is one of them. This is actually less than half of that. It's essentially 50 by 50, not quite. Essentially, what we're looking at is a 49-plus by 49-plus lot that doesn't give us very much square footage. The overall square footage of the lot, in fact, is actually smaller than many people, the footprint of many people's houses. But in this particular case, and given much of what's going on at Higgins Beach, the houses are smaller. And what we have here is a house that has been in existence now for well over a half a century, on a lot that was created as part of a development over a century ago. And Beth would like to be able to remodel it, primarily because, and the impetus for it, is the flood zone. With FEMA changing the flood zones, we know it's not yet official, but it's going to be. I've been working on that for many, many years. What we're trying to do now is encourage anybody who is going to be working in the beach areas, whether it's Higgins Beach, Pine Point, Scarborough Beach area, et cetera, to take that into consideration, that meaning the flood hazards, when they are looking at remodeling or rebuilding their house, if it's anything relatively substantial. And what that means is because even though this is outside of the shoreline zone, and I do want to reiterate that, it's not in the shoreline zone, but it is in a flood zone. As those flood zones expand, and the erosion hazard areas expand, et cetera, when we're doing and looking at a major renovation, fairly major renovation, we really need to try to be proactive and raise those houses up, or in this case, raise the cottage up, which means on piles. Because it's in the erosion hazard area, the free movement of wind, sand, and water really needs to be, to be able to minimize impact as far as flood hazard is concerned, needs to be able to flow through those foundations, as opposed to a foundation that would actually stop it, cause a backup of hydrostatic pressure, and then potentially do some damage to those structures that way. So Beth is being very proactive toward this end. We do have a cottage that looks nice, it's pretty stark, but as far as its aesthetics are concerned, but otherwise looks nice. It was somewhat recently re-roofed, within the past half a dozen years. It's got some relatively new siding on it. That is sort of masking an issue with many of the houses down in that area, and this one in particular, with issues that you can't really see as far as support is concerned. We're not here to argue that point by any means, just kind of present it. We've already decided that the most prudent thing to do in conjunction with this remodeling is literally raise up the structure anyway. Put those helical piles, or whatever the piles are going to be underneath it, and then lower the structure back onto that in conjunction with the remodeling. The reason we're here, as far as a hardship variance is concerned, is because of the size of the lot relative to the small house, but still large as far as the lot is concerned that sits on this property. And what Beth would like to do, and I'm going to call your attention to your packets as far as the architectuals, or just right here, which is the same design that you've got, essentially what we're looking at is a house that looks like this now, and is proposed to look like this one. And the difference is, right now, the house has, and you can see the photographs that I passed out to you earlier, the second photograph, shows you this little infill area where the propane tanks are located. In conjunction with remodeling the house, this little area right in here was added on long after the original cottage was created. So it's a great addition to the inside of the house, but from the outside, when you go to raise this house up, that thing's going to fall off. So in conjunction with remodeling the house, what we're proposing to do is, because this is very close to the back line, is actually remove this, albeit temporarily, and rebuild it when the house is remodeled and placed, lowered back on its piles, that will actually increase the setback from the rear line, so we will not be as non-conforming as we are now. Albeit slightly, but it's a big step in the right direction. And toward that end, what we'd like to do is just square this off a little bit. It's only about a four-by-six area, so it doesn't encompass a whole lot, but it doesn't meet the code as far as setbacks are concerned. That code now is 30 feet from the rear. Well, 30 feet, when you put the front and the rear setbacks under normal situations, together, we've got a building envelope that's literally two feet wide, or two feet deep by the, about 34 feet wide. So you can't get a house, or a shed, or anything in that zone. So when we want to do anything to the house, we have to come here. Sides are not an issue, the side setbacks are fine. But in order just to be able to infill this particular area, and then we also have a request I'll get to just in a moment, for a land, extended landing that's going to go across the front. But this is why we're here this evening, asking for this particular variance again, because we don't meet the exact setbacks, because nobody could meet those setbacks. So it's more of a formality, but this is where we are. So I'm just going to show you a little bit about what the lot looks like. You can see from the survey that the lot is relatively small, and the house takes up the vast majority of it. And you can see the lots on either side. Here's one lot literally on one side, and then the bonding lot on the other side. So it fits, the lot fits very nicely, character-wise, into the neighborhood as far as it's literally immediate butters are concerned. It's just a small lot. Now, because we're in the floodplain, we're here for a hardship variance, as opposed to practical difficulty, again, even though we're outside of the shoreline zone. And what we have is what we've always had, and that is, you know, a bit of a question on that first question, reasonable return. How do we actually get through, you know, a reasonable return when some people have said, "Well, you can have a vacant lot and put Adarondack chairs out there, and you've got some type of return." In this particular case, this building needs to be repaired, remodeled, redone badly. The foundation, which is going to go away anyway, it's a frost wall foundation right now, is actually in such poor shape, and Beth can tell you, and as well as Robin, that the house is slanting. So it needs to be repaired regardless. And again, rather than just try to repair it, albeit minimally, let's do the right thing, put it up on piles, rebuild it, make sure that it's up to current code, and we've got a strong house in which Beth can live for the rest of her time here. This is her only residence, her principal residence here in Scarborough, this is where she lives year-round. And toward that end, she's looking to be able to remodel this to make it considerably more livable than it is right now. I did speak with Brian a little bit earlier, I am going to refer to minorly a, an inspection report, which you do not have in your packets. It's six pages long, which is why I didn't want to put that in there, but I will submit that to Brian for the record. What I will tell you is that the inspector went, as they typically do, go all through the houses, and in particular, the foundation, which is more our forte than anything else, the inspector indicated that this needs to be replaced. So it is. But in conjunction with that-
Just stop one second. Who is the, who did the inspection?
Brian Rollins.
That just helps me, I know him.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I do have that information for you, as far as that report is concerned. That in and of itself isn't a big deal, because we're getting rid of the foundation and putting up on piles. So coming back to the need for the variance, when we're looking at reasonable return, you know, if this were a tiny little fisherman's cottage, you'd probably have a reasonable return. As a principal residence, given the way it's conditioned right now, there's not only a, not a reasonable, in my opinion, not a reasonable return, there's virtually no return without putting a lot of effort and money into the house. Toward that end, since we are very close to the back line, but getting further away from it with what we propose, we believe that the reasonable return would be met as far as it being the principal house. Now, the other part of this, in addition to the small infill area, is an extended landing, proposal for an extended landing that goes across the front of the house. Much to Robin's, the architect's credit, taking a look at the form-based code, while we are limited because of the position of the house and the size of the lot, et cetera, we're trying to conform as much as possible to the intent of that code, which is, in essence, to be able to create additional fenestration on a house, break up the facade, in other words. Now, you can see in the picture that you've got, it's not a bad-looking house, it's just really plain and stark, and it's got a two-story face to it that just has a tiny little step on the front, and that's it. So what we propose is to be able to extend a landing that's going to also like, make it a lot easier seasonally, while this winter wasn't too bad. We all remember last year, which was a killer, six feet of snow on the ground almost at this time still. And by elevating this landing, Ms. Schisler lives on her own, and she's going to be, it's just a lot easier to be able to take that snow directly from the driveway, as opposed to trying to kick it up over your heels, up your head, as long as that goes into the intent of the code, which was to break up the facade of a house, not with a full porch. It'd be great to have that, but then we'd be right on top of the right-of-way. All we'd like to do is be able to extend the landing over to the driveway right now, and have that be part of the variance as far as the unique circumstances of the property as well. So given that, spoken enough, I'd be happy to answer any questions, address any comments that you have. And again, if it's architectural in nature, Robin will certainly come up and address it. And if you've got any specific questions of Ms. Schisler, she'll be here as well.
The board have questions? Next question. Just ask the other one, please.
The only thing I would add, I think, and Jim can probably clarify, I believe that one of the reasons for the proposed landing extension on the front of the house, as opposed to a front porch, was also that a deck really was all the DEP would allow in the dune, because they consider that able to transfer the sand in the dune action, and it's not a structure because it doesn't have a roof on it.
That's correct.
So that's, that's a criteria of DEPs more than anything. If it weren't for that, then the applicant certainly could come and ask for relief for a full, you know, covered porch, as opposed to an open platform. So just, just getting back to the form-based code, the form-based code would rather see a porch. She can't do that. That's, that's why that is the way it is. I think maybe the biggest reason that is the way it is.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. And by the way, you do have in your packets the approved DEP permit by rule for this project? So they have taken a look at it, they have reviewed it, and they have approved it.
And is the landing making you more non-conforming?
No. The landing is, the landing that's there now, and the steps that are to it, are actually going to be rotated 90 degrees. So given it's only steps, but the, by getting rid of the steps that are coming toward the front of the house, and actually reorienting that toward the driveway, we're actually decreasing that. But from the landing's perspective, because the house is slightly angled to the lot, the extent of the landing that sticks out right now, it's going to be about an extra half a foot closer to the overall road, but it's going to be about a foot and a half less close to the front right-of-way, because of the reorientation of that landing, and the steps going to the driveway, as opposed to heading straight out to the road. That's graphically, that's, this section right here has actually got the steps to come down to the road, to the front property line. Over here, we're going to be reorienting that and turning it, so it actually comes out this direction.
Mr. Longstaff, could you help me with a little bit of an understanding of the shoreline rules? You'd said that the deck could, you could not put a roof over that, because that affected the, that was a DEP item?
That's DEP, not shoreline, and that's, that's the dune regulations, Jeff.
Can you explain how that works to me? Because I don't understand how-
I wish I could, but unfortunately, I don't tend to understand the dune regulations. I thought I did. I was informed that I did not understand them. We attempted to try to capsulize it in our Higgins Beach ordinance, if you recall, there was sort of a matrix. DEP got a hold of that, we thought they'd already vetted, it had already been vetted through them, but they said, "That's all wrong. You should just take that out." And just leave the top line that says, "Call DEP."
So basically, they just make it this way?
Yeah.
The roof, as opposed to the deck, could affect the flooding?
No. No. No, no, it has nothing to do with flooding.
Okay.
There are two things at work here. It's in the, it's in the frontal, no, it's in the erosion hazard area.
Correct.
It's in the erosion hazard area, okay? That's not floodplain.
Okay.
That's dune stuff, okay? Floodplain is a completely different animal. And to just enlighten you a little bit about the floodplain issue, Ms. Schisler is actually proposing to elevate the structure one foot above the sort of proposed base flood, the new base flood elevation, not the existing base flood.
One that might come on-
We know that there's going to be a map change some year, we think, maybe by 2017.
Maybe.
And so, since she's sinking, or proposing to sink a substantial amount of money and effort into the structure, it would only make sense to kind of plan, while she knows she's got to elevate it, why not elevate it to what we believe will probably be the new base flood elevation? I can't say with any, with 100% certainty that it will be, but I don't believe you're going to see a lot of change in that.
It won't go down.
It won't go down. Certainly won't go down. And so, there is a benefit for every foot above base flood that you elevate. You don't have to be just one foot above, but as long as you're not exceeding building height, which she's not, that's, that's what she's proposing to do. I just wanted to clarify that, too. It's not the existing base flood that she's elevating to, it's the proposed, which makes good sense. If you can do it, if you're in the middle of a project, you might as well raise it for what it's going to be, not what it is currently. And there's quite a difference between the current base flood and the proposed, so.
And now you know why I said at the beginning, thank you very much for the very good letter, because there are four, four layers that we're dealing with in this appeal. And Ms. Longstaff condensed it down to one and a half pages, one and a quarter pages, for me to be able to understand, and it's-
To answer your original question, I can't remember the exact reason why they don't allow roofs over, but maybe Robin can? Yeah, please.
Yep. Migration of-
This one?
There you go.
Okay. I'm Robin Tannenbaum, from Kaplan Thompson Architects. My understanding, and I, too, it's been a learning curve with all these different layers, is it's not so much allowing, as once you put a roof over it, it becomes, determine, it's not the impervious, but it becomes, it counts as square foot of building. And so, she would have to remove other square foot of building in order to do it. It's already existing, as conditioned space, because she wouldn't be allowed to, to have both.
As opposed to the rule regarding patio versus deck?
Yes, because, I think, because that's porous, it's not considered footprint. It's my understanding from coastal DEPs.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a couple of caveats in the-
It's open and not open. I mean, we would love, even on the back deck that we have, to her sort of mudroom door, it's not as covered overhead as one would like when one's doing their house, but we can't. Our hands are tied on that. So it's unfortunate, we did the best we could, but it's, as much as we're allowed right now.
Thank you. Are the board member questions, comments? If not, I'll open the public hearing, if anybody would like to speak from the public. Want to open the public hearing? And if you could state your name and address, that would be great.
I'm Margaret Donovan. I'm at 50 Bayview, right beside her. I took a house similar to what she has there, and remodeled it. I know how bad it is under that vinyl, and it really needs help. So, and it's going to be great to have someone year-round that actually loves the ocean, too. And that's what her intent is. So I support her improving that property 100%.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan. Appreciate it. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, seeing no one else wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing part of this meeting. We go to the requirements of the variance appeal. And again, that's the most difficult of our appeals. If you'd like to start, Mr. Fisher, we'll go with you.
The first question, the landing question, cannot yield a reasonable return, et cetera. In order to be proactive, as we've just discussed, relative to FEMA's flood hazard designations in the Higgins Beach area, which will eventually come here soon, it's been the same information for a couple of years, and it just is remaining to be put into place. The entire house is going to have to be raised and placed on the pile foundation. That house will need to be extensively remodeled in order to do so. And in doing so, a portion of the house will be removed, which is approximately 34, 32 square feet at the back of that house right now, and replaced with an infill, the northwesterly corner of the house at 29 square feet. This reduces the existing non-conformity by two feet, which means that the rear of the house will be two feet further away from the property line than the current house. Also, the elevated walkway would be extended across the front of the house from the current porch to the driveway. As far as reasonable return, given that this is a permanent house, and a very modest house at that, we believe that that reasonable return criteria would be met.
Thank you.
The need for the variance due to the unique circumstance of the property, the need for the variance is solely due to the unique circumstance of the property, it being an exceptionally small lot at 2,490 square feet. Because of zoning setbacks relative to lot size that were enacted afterwards, the building envelope on the lot is literally two feet deep by 30 feet long, 34 feet long, wide, and thus could not support a structure of any kind, let alone a full house. Number three, the granting of the variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The overall remodeled structure will be almost the same as what you currently see, albeit augmented with the fenestration that we propose, relative to what currently exists, including its height. The essential character of the neighborhood will not be altered negatively. In fact, as we just heard, it will very likely enhance the character of the neighborhood by taking an otherwise relatively modest house and minorly, but significantly, dressing it up a bit. And then finally, the hardship is not the result of action taken by the applicant or a prior owner. The lot in the existing house predate zoning. The lot was created in 1897 as part of one development, and then the house, according to municipal records, was constructed in 1946. And the issue of the hardship is thus the result of the enactment of zoning long after the lot was created and the house was actually constructed. Thank you.
Thank you. This requires a conversation on each one of these items. This requires a conversation on each one of these items, and I'd like to make those conversations as part of the facts. And then we'll come back and summarize whichever way the board chooses to go from there, for the record's sake, okay? As far as number one, reasonable return, I had the opportunity, I was actually in Florida this week, and had the opportunity to talk to some people down there regarding flood zones and regarding typical zoning and how it varies from state to state and parts of the world. And the issue of, you know, how do you deal with variance in, and each state has different rules, but the net result is, how do you deal with something like criteria that has no reasonable return? And they gave me the best answer I think I've ever heard. If in fact you're dealing with a flood zone, you're saying by not allowing the property to be raised, that is going to get totaled at some point within a hundred years, which by default would make it a justification for reasonable return. Which whether or not we agree with that argument, it was fascinating and simple. Now granted, they get flooded out every other year, so they deal with it a lot more than we do, but it was amazing the number of lots I saw in Cape Coral that were vacant, and they were vacant because of the storms. And I was wondering whether or not you could rebuild. And the argument was, you can if you follow the appropriate codes, but one of the argument was, can we defy that by saying that by meeting the requirement of raising it, you bring you a reasonable return? Which I'd never heard before. I'm not saying that is what we should do, but I found enough that, I found it intriguing enough that I certainly would add it to my repertoire of reasons. And I think it does meet that requirement along with, I take the word of the construction as far as that's concerned, and I do know the person that did the building inspection, so I'll take that on that. Are the board members with thoughts, questions on that issue? That is one of the most difficult on the variance appeal.
It is, and I think about that a lot. I agree with that argument, too, Mark. I think that's a good point. And also, when I see this argument for this home, I think it boils down to that. It's, you know, this woman just wants a home to live that's safe, that's going to be there for years to come, and this is really the only vehicle to do, and I think that's well within reason, I do. And I think if we weren't allowed it, it wouldn't yield a reasonable return. That's how I feel about that first question, you know what I mean?
Mr. Fisher, do you have a copy of the inspection?
I do.
Can I look at that?
You certainly may.
Other board members like to see this as we go along, we'll just, to me, there's enough weight that I'm okay with it, but I respect anybody that wants to read it first. Other comments regarding, why don't we start right down at this? Karen, I'm going to put you right on the spot right off the bat. The requirement for reasonable return is not maximum return, but rather, and if you haven't been to one of the training programs that the state runs, these are virtually almost impossible to meet those requirements, almost impossible. But there are times when it does. I think this house meets that for the reasons that I stated also, because we know a lot about those houses down there. And if you're going to remodel it, once you hit the fifty percent threshold, you've got no choice but to come to us in this case. And it doesn't take much to get the fifty percent of the cost. So what I'd like you to do is respond to how you feel about that. And if you have questions, feel free to ask Mr. Longstaff or anybody else, but we'll let you jump right in.
In regards to reasonable return?
Yes.
Well, I used to be a Realtor, so I'm very familiar with a reasonable return. And so I totally understand, you know, what you want to do with the property, make it more valuable, and yes, it totally does increase the value of the properties around it. And it sort of sets a standard for other people to maybe, it's a beautiful design. And so I think it fits very well, as the zoning board had said in their review of it, that it fits well with kind of what their idea was, the future of Higgins Beach is.
I guess, excuse me, my interpretation of this as well aligns with yours, Mark. And coming out from more of an engineering standpoint, if the house is already slanting and the potential for, you know, the hundred-year flood is always certainly there by raising the structure and then maintaining the original height of the structure from the original structure, really does go a long way. And my comments sort of touch upon all four of these, I don't mean to, but, you know, why apply a Band-Aid to this situation where if you're going to be redoing this with the minimal effect to the nonconformity issues of this project, why not just do it and go all the way with it? So I don't really see, I see this as sort of one of the better explanations or better arguments for the reasonable return in this case.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think that approaching it any other way than the way she's chosen is the right way to do it, to provide a house that's safe in the years to come.
Thank you. Mr. Crockett, do you have enough time to look at that or do you need more time?
Yeah, I think we should, I mean, it would be my suggestion that we put this in
As part of the record.
Public record and the finding of facts. There's some features in here for, one, there's high-level radon in the house, asbestos, there wasn't any asbestos shoes, but there is notating of potential lead paint. I'm sure when they renovate, they may be moving that out of there. There's mold in the sheet rock in the basement and attic, and so you've got white mold there, water in the crawl spaces. Because normally, I wouldn't vote yes that it doesn't, that it meets this question, but just looking through here, I mean, there's water lines on rigid insulation, indicate about eight inches of water standing along the walls and more near the center. And it's just, there's several things in here that are notated by the inspector that are unsafe, so with that...
I encapsulized that well, thank you.
With that being said, I think we should put this in the record as finding the fact as well, because it notates a lot of information that I normally wouldn't be okay with for reasonable return.
So we'll make that as part of the record and part of your comments. Okay, so as far as the first requirement, which is reasonable return, I agree again, I'll come back to what I said. I think now, especially with your comment tied to that, that it does meet that, it does meet the standard of A, and so I'll be voting yes for that item. So I'd like to take a position as we vote on each one of these. Do I have, I'll put a motion out that we approve the plan, section one of this, just the reasonable return part. So all in favor of section one being met? That's unanimous on section one, meaning the variance regarding the hardship?
Normally, I wouldn't be, but thank you for providing the additional information. It's helpful because if something's unsafe, that makes the decision a little bit easier and the fact that you're bringing it back into setbacks and you're also doing some things to raise it up above the floodplain, which is coming, so there's a lot of preemptive strikes here, which is good.
Thank you. And number two is the need for variance due to the unique circumstance of the property. This criterion, again, applies to the property, not the people, and so again, why don't we give Karen a break? We'll start down at this end with you.
Yeah, I mean, it is what it is down there. The lots are all very unique, and we've addressed it. We've looked at things to be done, so, I mean, it is kind of a plain, basic house. It's livable, but it does mean something.
I agree completely with that. I don't have much to add. Anything else?
I encapsulate what I would say.
No, I agree. I mean, you're doing the best you can with what you have.
I would say that as far as the neighborhood, I appreciate the comments from the neighbors. I think that's important. I look at the map, and it's obvious that it is very tiny compared to properties. I love the fact that it's not expanding. I think that's great, which is consistent with what the board has taken overall and the work that went in. I think the architect, by the way, was, I loved what you did with the plan internally. I think you did a fantastic job with that layout. I was amazed that it laid out, you get three bedrooms in there. And so I think you did a great job with that design, it seems very functional, and the previous design had some functional obsolescence, which I think also helps. So I have, it is absolutely the property, so I have no problem with that. So again, I'll take all in favor of the property meeting the requirement for unique circumstance of the property. Now, a two, yes, all approved. So that's unanimous on number two. Number three is the grant of the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. I don't think we have to waste a lot of time on that. I think it's pretty straightforward. It's actually only, it's consistent with what the new plans are, so if anything, it's bringing it more in compliance with the new plans and actually the vision of the work that was done. And I think it looks very attractive. I don't totally understand the roof concept, that's okay. So I have no problem with supporting three.
Like you said before, Mr. Chairman, it's nice that we have a neighbor that's coming forward that is encouraging it to be done, to help with the neighborhood, so that's always a positive for us when we're looking at these things.
And Ms. Donovan, that really does make a difference. Thanks for taking the time.
Well, my house was very similar, it was very, I think you were on the board when I came. And I was like, am I going to be overdoing all of it? It was...
He was eighteen when he started on the board.
I was a lot younger, too.
I mean, it just enhances the surrounding lots in the neighborhood and only increases the value, which, and also looking at the design, it's very close to what was there originally as far as aesthetics, and it really, it works. I have no issues with this.
Great, thank you. Issue?
Oh, no, I think it's a nice kind of step in the future of what Higgins Beach will be someday.
So I have a motion on number three. I'll just move it anyways. All in favor of number three taking, being met, unanimous? And the final item is the hardship is not the result of the action taken by the applicant or prior owner. I did get a chuckle out of, and I got a pick on Mr. Longstaff for this allegedly thing. I love the word. Allegedly, it was nineteen forty-six.
Right. I said allegedly because I didn't check the facts.
It just seemed like political words, you know? I just enjoyed it. I thought that was kind of good. But anyways, and I got to tell you, the strongest reason, honestly, what made this very easy for me to grab a hold of and get the concept of, was the work that the towns, which Mr. Longstaff did, on just defining all the loose ends that if left to our own device, could have taken weeks to go through, whereas I think he summarized that very well, and I think Mr. Fisher did a good job of that, too. Again, I think on that issue, number four, I lost it. Thank you. It resulted in action taken by a prior owner, it's irrelevant on this issue, I think. Certainly wasn't, nothing's been done since seventy-nine. Other comments from the board? Okay, and then vote on number four, all in favor? That's unanimous. So now we have a motion on the entire appeal. I'd like to make a motion to approve appeal number two, five, six, six.
Second?
And discussion on the motion. Seeing none or all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thanks for your time.
Congratulations.
That's great to hear. And Ms. Longstaff, just in case it didn't come across, she had thanked Ms. Longstaff for his patience. It's great to have Ms. Longstaff here. I think you did a fantastic job.
Please stop it.
So, congratulations on the fix. I love your design. I think it was very tasteful, creative. Sure. You're welcome.
I'll jump on.
Very glad for you.
Not yet. Congratulations. Good luck, yeah.
Mr. Fisher, not to leave you out, as always.
Good luck. You're welcome.
Yes, you are.
And as I pointed out regarding the next appeal, and we'll just take a second here, but are we switching the order? Because the first, the second appeal is actually a variance appeal. If the variance doesn't go through, the other one becomes kind of useless, so we might as well go first with the variance and then deal with the second part. So that's the logic behind that. I got anything? I find my black packet anywhere? Hold on, you weren't coming back, I was thinking I wasn't, too. I got some orders, which is Brian and Moby. Who's long? Yes. How do you handle it? There. Please, don't you spin up there? No. I'm not that good. No. You're ready? No.
I'm ready when you're ready.
So second appeal is appeal number twenty-five sixty-eight. It's a variance appeal by Deborah T. Gates, trustee of the Deborah T. Gates Trust, four twenty-three Black Point Road, assessors map, R one oh three, parcel eleven. When we have a representative, if you could state your name, address, do a vote for them.
Hi, my name's Marvin Gates. My address is two forty-one West one hundred and thirteenth Street, New York, New York, one oh oh two six. This is my wife Debbie, who's the appellant, I believe. This is the architect, Ted Hafenreffer, and one of the abutters, Mr. Gray. Mr. Howard Gray has joined us as well. I'm pleased that the gentleman who just made the last presentation isn't here because I can say that's a tough act to follow. At any rate, this is my first time doing anything like this. I don't even know where to begin.
That's okay, it will help you.
Sure.
Number one, this is a citizen board, as we said earlier at the beginning. Our goal is to work rather as best we can to help the community get the right answers.
Sure.
So relax, and basically the goal is just to try and help the process through so that we're doing the right thing by the town and by the people that own the property.
Completely understand. I, we bought the property in twenty thirteen. Prior to buying it, we, I met with Mr. Longstaff a few times. We figured out some details as to the nuances of the property. And what I mean by that is, in every conceivable way, the property is nonconforming, that we could figure out. The, and all the terms do not come to my ready attention, but the distances from the side, the distances from the front, the fact that it's a commercial property and rural farm. And before I go much further, because Brian Longstaff's minutes that he sent to you prior to the meeting, I don't know if it's a minute. It's sort of a structural engineer's report at this time, and this is the report, and I'm going to be referring to it throughout the presentation.
Thank you.
So my only plan here is to introduce ourselves, give you some background to us so it feels as though we're not total strangers, and then proceed to read my answers to the variance.
Is that clear?
Is that fair enough?
That's exactly it. We'll talk about it.
Okay. The packet includes photographs of the drawings of Mr. Hafenreffers. And let me introduce ourselves, which to some degree is in the project description and circumstances as well, but my grandmother, and that's grandmother, not great-grandmother, started coming to the area in the eighteen nineties. My, yes, I know. And my...
I know who this is older.
My grandmother and grandfather continued doing that after they were married and eventually bought a house... So my only plan here is to introduce ourselves, give you some background to us so it feels as though we're not total strangers, and then proceed to read my answers to the variance.
Is that clear?
Is that fair enough?
That's exactly it. We'll talk about it.
Okay. The packet includes photographs of, uh, the drawings of Mr. Hafenreffer's. And let me introduce ourselves, which to some degree is in the project description and circumstances as well. But, um, my grandmother, uh, and that's grandmother, not great grandmother, uh, started coming to the area in the eighteen nineties. Uh, my, yes, I know. And, uh,
I know who says older.
My, my grandmother and grandfather, uh, continued doing that after they were married and eventually bought a house, uh, at Prouds Neck in the nineteen forties. I grew up coming two months every summer with my brothers and sisters and my parents to visit him. And, uh, he, uh, that ended when I was about thirteen. He died, the property was sold. I remember passing this every day, and as you can imagine, a young boy, I'll just say eight, nine, ten years old. This meant that we were just about there. It was a, uh, milestone, landmark. And, um, fast forward, I'm sure I'm leaving lots out, but fast forward to twenty thirteen, the year we bought the property, we were back up. My siblings have continued going up, uh, and renting, uh, and one, uh, built a piece of property on Prouds Neck. And we know, uh, Debbie and I came up for a wedding of my brother's, uh, daughter. And, uh, noticed that what I call Harman's, but white caps, uh, was for sale. And I won't bore you with tons of more detail, but one thing led to another. And after conferring with the town about is this at all reasonable, possible even, to do with what we thought we might want to do with it, uh, we decided to buy it. And then, uh, here we are. Once again, have met with Mr. Longstaff and conferred with him many, many times. As I said, uh, I sort of have the bad penny, uh, way of showing up and discussing things over and over again. So, have I left anything else? Oh, yeah, my grandparents are buried at Blackpoint, in the cemetery. I feel, even though we're obviously not, uh, here now, as though, uh, I'm a part of the place, so.
The good news is, we don't, we don't hold anything against New Yorkers.
Right, right, right.
We don't like their piazzas, but besides that, okay.
Well, and, and the Royals won the World Series this year, so that's.
Well, it makes no difference where you're from. The bottom line is that, uh, you know, we're glad that you're taking interest in the property and you're trying to do something with it.
Well, let me start, uh, by reading, uh, A and B, if I may. Please.
Um, if, if I could maybe just run down, just give us a brief elevator pitch on what you propose to do with the structure.
Well, I was hoping I could read A and B to do that, but I, uh,
Well, if it fits better that way, go ahead and do it.
What we're proposing to do, uh, from, you know, the higher view, is we want to keep as much, as again, it's a landmark. So we want to basically, as I say to people, if you were to blink, and it would be a long blink, with what we would do to it, you would think we have not changed anything here. It would still look the same. In the back, in the building, buildable envelope of the property, we would like to put a, uh, small cottage. I mean, we're talking about the building envelope being five hundred and fifty square feet roughly. We are coming up of what the architect, Ted can, uh, help me out here, but think of it as being a story and a half. The second story is dormered. So it remains to be not too high and feels low. Uh, we're bringing the setbacks into variance on the side. We are bringing the, it currently has more than twenty-five percent of the lot, uh, covered with a building, so we're bringing that back into variance as well. We are not going to, obviously not going to keep it as a commercial property. It hasn't been a viable commercial property for a long time. As I state in the, in the, uh, in the application, uh, it was on the market for many years. The neighbors weren't interested in it. We have a sentimental and historical attachment to it. And what we want to do is we want to have a small cottage in the back. And in the front, I'm a, by training and profession, I'm a fine artist, a, uh, a painter. And, uh, in the front, where Harmon's White Cap is, in the forehand, this gets into the second, uh, application, but the, uh, the, uh, open a small gallery, uh, home occupation gallery, where I can show my work. And that's open to by appointment. It's not a high-traffic area. It would be, if you were interested in what I was doing, please give me a call and, and let's set up an appointment and come by and see. Again, four hundred square feet, not huge, but, uh, I would say in essence, we're trying to make something that looks like a total wreck. And it, when we get to the, uh, structural engineering report, which I definitely would like to read, the summation for the record, is, uh, in imminent, you know, state of collapse, and make an attractive, uh, scaled, so it doesn't appear to be overwhelming, uh, structure of, uh, value to the, to us, obviously, but that's not what we're here for. It's a value to the, to the site and to the town and to the community. And, uh, I hope that's not overstating it.
That's good. Let me, uh, Mr. Longstaff, anything you would like to add to this?
No, uh, uh, Mr. Gates left out one thing after he first conferred with me and we looked at the constraints on the lot. I told him not to buy it. He did. I just want to go on record, uh, but no, uh, we, we.
That's fine. I don't recall it that way, but I.
I may have also mentioned that he might be crazy, but anyway. But no, he, he had a passion for it. We, we looked at the, the building, the existing building envelope, which you can see on, uh, on the, which is right here. This is the legal building envelope. Uh, so you, so the existing building had this little, it does have this little block wing on the side of it, which he's proposing to remove along with the rest of the structure. So that was the real non-conforming part of the, the building. Obviously, the front was also really non-conforming and close to the road with, with very little parking. So what you can see in the darker line weights here is what he's proposing to put. And so the dwelling is, the, the part that's going to be their cottage dwelling is fitting into that tiny buildable envelope. And then the, the other part of the structure, which is basically mirrors the existing structure, would be moved back from the road is, is what he's proposing, and creating a little bit more space, a little bit more conforming setbacks, certainly not conforming, but with a lot that's, you know, barely, uh, what is it? I forgot now. It's, uh, fifteen hundred square feet? Is that what it's?
The lot itself?
Yeah.
Uh, no, the lot is of, not, is roughly fifty-four hundred square feet?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. It was, it's very small.
It's sixty by ninety, and it's not a rectangle, it's a parallelogram, and, uh,
Takes an artist to see something.
What'd you say?
Takes an artist to see something, doesn't it?
Thank you.
Just to sort of speed the process up a little bit.
Sure.
Why don't we go through the, uh, the criteria? Why don't we open up a public hearing first, if anybody would like to speak to the public? Does anybody want to speak on this issue? Feel free to take the microphone, Mr. Gray. State your name, address, we'll go from there. Do you have any letters or phone calls?
My name is Howard Gray, and we own the property behind this and on side of Mr. Gates. We have no objection whatsoever with it. Mr. Gates did say it's not going to be used commercially, and I would like to think that, uh, he would not be using it as a rental unit down the line. I don't know if that can be put in there or not. I know we haven't talked about this. But otherwise than that, uh, my wife and I are very pleased that they're going to do something with it, and we look forward to it. Thank you.
It's great to see, you know, we can't put a restriction like that on it, but, um,
I'm sorry, I can't hear a word, just a second.
Okay, thanks. So let's, uh, go to the first criterion, okay, well, the landing question cannot yield a reasonable return unless the variance is granted. And if you want to read in the record what you've got, that, that would be perfect.
Thank you.
And the reason why we use it, have you read into the record, is because that's the actual, that's the actual, the writing documents aren't, the actual testimony is.
Very good, very good. I've, I've, I've looked at some of your videotapes, and I appreciate the, that fact. The lot is very small, five, five thousand three hundred and eighty-four square feet. Its shape is a parallelogram, after the setbacks, fifty feet in the front and fifteen feet on the sides and back. And with the common construction practice of building at right angles, the size of the building envelope is five hundred and eighty-four square feet. That is the size of a small one-bedroom apartment. If this was beachfront property, maybe the land would make a nice picnic site. The property does not have that view. The property is too small for productive farming, and besides, the soil is sand. Neither abutter found it useful enough to purchase. For several years before its purchase by the applicant, the property was on the market. For an even longer period of time, the property had not operated as a viable commercial business. Without the variance, the land cannot yield a reasonable return.
Okay, thank you. And the second one is the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property.
The size of the property and its commercial use are the unique circumstances of the property. The lot, pardon me, the lots, the lot, original building and permitted use date to nineteen thirty, long before current zoning. Originally, the property operated as a fish market. Later, it expanded and was a general market. Always, it served the affluent neighborhood of Prouds Neck. The original owner's grandchildren told the representative, that's me, that their parents sold the property over fifty years ago because the business model was no longer viable. Each incarnation of the business since then has been less successful than the one before. For many years before the applicant purchased the property in twenty thirteen, very little business occurred. Here, its small size and commercial use are very uncommon conditions not shared by the neighborhood. The need for the variance is absolutely due to these unique circumstances.
Thank you. And the granting of variance will, will not result in a essential different character of the neighborhood.
Thank you. The granting of the variance will enhance the neighborhood's essential character. In the accompanying photograph, uh, and the photographs you have in front of you, but I'm referring to the historical photographs. Pardon me. In the accompanying photograph, please note that for over eighty years, the property has been interwoven with the neighborhood's essential character. The applicant wants to maintain that character. The result for the variance, the request for the variance is linked hand in glove with a desire not to alter such character. The applicant wants a residence. In the front room, the applicant requests a home occupation, an art gallery. The applicant thinks that the affluent neighbors of Prouds Neck will enjoy such a home occupation. The front of the proposed building will appear unchanged. The applicant's husband, again, my wife, the applicant, me, the husband, spent summers at Prouds Neck with his grandfather, a past president of the Prouds Neck Country Club. His grandparents are buried in Blackpoint Cemetery. To ha, to enhance the character, we want to replace the current big plastic sign with a smaller historic Harmon's Market sign.
It's just nice touch, actually. Uh, number four is, uh, the hardship is not a result of the action taken by the applicant or prior owner. And just for the record, on the issue of, uh, purchasing, that's kind of in sell, um, well, as long as, as in that's the case law that purchasing the property doesn't trigger that requirement. So even though they purchased the property knowing that it didn't meet current setbacks or regulations, that's been since, there was a debate on that at one point, and that's been taken off the table. So it's no longer something you have to worry about.
And, and, yeah, that's, um, an accurate statement. And the other thing to consider, too, is that the, the reason that this is a standard hardship variance is because the, the property is in the floodplain. Otherwise, it could be a practical difficulty variance, um, with not quite as restrictive, um, criteria to meet. Well, that, it, oh, excuse me, is there?
It's in the standard floodplain, but there, is, is there a possibility of a, a letter of map amendment on this property? Has, has that been explored, but?
Uh, it's possible. We don't have an elevation certificate on it, but I think, I think if we look at the building plans, I believe Ted has some elevations on the finished floor.
Mr. Longstaff, would you, would you please take the microphone so we can just get your name and record and hear you on the, on the tape? Thank you.
I'm Ted Hafenreffer. I did the, uh, design of the house. Um, the, um, the site plan that I referred to is Owen Haskell's Boundary and Topographic Survey. And, uh, as part of the work that they did, they came up with a first floor, uh, finished first floor level of eleven point oh eight, which is actually eleven foot, one inch, and I believe ten is floodplain, so it's, it's a foot over floodplain, a base floodplain.
The current, the current base floodplain?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and then there's also, another place in the back, it's eleven point one two, which is, um, eleven foot, one and a half inches. So it's just over, uh, one foot over the existing floodplain, base floodplain. Uh, and, uh, what we, uh, intended to do is to raise it, um, up an additional eight inches to, uh, give it, to get it a little bit, just a little bit higher, but not so high that it began to get too high because it, you know, it would begin to lose some of its historic character at that point in time.
Are you planning to do that based upon what we heard from the last applicant, anticipating that the floodplain is going to change? Is that why you're planning to raise it up that additionally inches?
Partially, but we, we're not taking it up to the new standard. We're taking, we're, 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 we're just raising it up an additional eight inches above where it is right now, just to give us a, you know, a margin of safety.
Is there a reason why you wouldn't bring it up to the new standards, like the last applicant is doing, or?
Uh, the reason for that was really that, um, in order to get it up that, that high, it would, you'd see an awful lot of foundation and very, you know, very little, you know, I mean, it would, it would begin to look like, um, it was all foundation that sort of, um, as, as looking at the front of the building, without being able to, um, grade up to the building properly, and the, the site's so small that we really couldn't do that either.
Okay, and the, uh, so that's, did, I, I'm sorry, I don't think you've read in the, the, uh, the last one. The hardship is not resolved in action taken by the applicant or prior owner. Of course, Mr. Gates, that would be great.
Uh, yeah, thanks. Um, as described above, the hard, as described above, the hardship is due both to the property's very small size and limited use. The hardship was caused by imposition by zoning restrictions, not by action taken by the property owner. The lot, the existing building and the property's permitted use originated in nineteen thirty and all predate the town zoning ordinance. Since purchasing the property in twenty thirteen, besides maintaining the property, the property owner has taken no action.
Thank you very much. Uh, we're going to open the public hearing to this, so let's come back with questions, comments from the board.
I have a question. So Longstaff, why did you discourage them from purchasing it?
I was really only joking. I didn't discourage him from purchasing.
How, how long had it been on the market before you had purchased?
Oh, uh, you know, honestly, it's truth, truthfully, I don't know exactly. I think it had been on the market for.
Two years?
I believe two years, yeah.
And there's probably not anything that we need to look at, this, from Scavo Historical?
It doesn't have any history. And I got to be honest, I'm thrilled that, it's funny, it's a, it's not historical.
Okay, that's what I wanted to say.
Yeah, go ahead. I catch you off.
That's all I wanted to say.
Mr. Richard? Uh, a couple of thoughts. Number one, I love the idea that you're trying to keep the, uh, the flavor, especially putting the Harmon's back up thing, it's fascinating. Uh, it's, uh, rare. I, I find, I grew up in the seventies, when it was actually still being used on occasion, and it is a landmark. It truly is a, a quintessential part of, in my opinion, that road. And what's also very odd about it is it's, it's kind of standalone, uh, and it's, it's really steps up. So I, I think what you're. uh, and it's, it, it really steps up. So, I, I think what you're doing is, is personally, I, when I read this, I was thrilled, uh, with what you're trying to do. I, uh, I commend you. And I think the architect, again, second architect, you take a very small space and use it very efficiently. Uh, so, I think that's impressive, too. And again, the neighbors, if that makes, Mr. Gray, coming out here is important. So, again, just to tie all those things together, and the reason I say this is, for future applicants, if you understand what works, as I understand, you watch some of the tapes, there's a rhythm to this process, and, and following the rhythm to the process makes it a lot easier. It doesn't guarantee anything, but, but it certainly, um, has a better flow, just for the record.
I, I, I don't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead.
But I do think it's important to enter, uh, into the record, the, um, the structural engineers' report. And I, I, again, uh, in layman's terms, what we're really talking about here is, uh, approaching the plans, uh, practically, I suppose. And, uh, and, so, um, if I may, uh, just read for the record the summary of the structural engineers' report, I would very much appreciate it. It's, uh, as you have it in front of you. Um, and prior to doing, reading the last paragraph, I would just like to say that in, uh, in number one, the existing floor system, his last couple of paragraphs there are, "The deterioration has compromised the integrity of the entire floor system. The portion of the floor at the rear of the building has been completely removed due to the severe deterioration that was discovered. The existing post-pier supports beneath the floor beam have settled, are leaning, and are in imminent danger of collapse." As far as the roof structure, number two, "The instability is hazardous condition, is a hazardous condition which could potentially collapse when subjected to roof snow loads." Uh, number three, the exterior walls, "The excessive movement that the building is experiencing increases the potential of structural collapse when the building is subjected to lateral wind, seismic loads, and roof snow load. Part of the building is, uh, eight-inch concrete masonry block." His conclusion there was, "However, there are cracks in the masonry at every corner of the building. Hence, the masonry walls are experiencing movement due to frost heave and/or settlement, which is compromising the existing exterior concrete masonry block walls and foundation primarily at the corners of the building." And finally, thank you for letting me read those, the conclusion, "The existing building structure is in extremely poor condition and in a severe state of disrepair. The building is in imminent danger of collapse and unsafe to occupy due to the movement, deterioration, instability, and lack of capacity of the existing structural components." And finally, and to some degree, I think this addresses the question, at least in our minds, can you proceed here without the variance? Uh, it's our understanding in a technical sense that we can shore this up board by board. Again, I'm not politic, per se, so I don't know exactly how to say this in a way that is, uh, technically right, but practically speaking, uh, once we bring everything into variance, we are under some impression that we can proceed. It just becomes a practical impossibility to do so based on the structural deterioration of the building. And this is the, part of the conclusion that I think addresses, can you do this without the variance? "The deficiencies could be remedied by implementing properly designed reinforcement and/or resupport of the existing structure. However, in our opinion, it would be cost prohibitive to remediate the existing structure compared to raising the existing building and implementing a properly designed and constructed structural system. Furthermore, the efforts required to remediate the deficient structural components would more than likely result in demolition of a large portion of the structure to accommodate the required repairs. That is, essentially constructing a new structure within the existing structure, which would be more difficult and costly to achieve compared to constructing a new structure. If the existing building is remediated, it would be difficult to obtain a finished floor and roof structure that is level, true, and plumb, as it would still contain remnants of the poorly constructed structural components."
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, why don't we jump right into, uh, the board's comments on, uh, the first piece, the, uh, the man in question cannot yield a reasonable return unless the variance is granted. That would be, would you bring it?
Um, no, I think the same thing. It, it helps to have this structural engineering services report, which basically shows the building pretty much can't support much. So, um, definitely wanna put that into the record and, as I find in the facts, because it, really, it gives us a lot of information about the structure and the real viability of redoing it as it's, as opposed to, kind of, building a new structure.
Thank you. And again, this being part of the fact, the fact, the title, Mr. Richard?
I agree. I echo that, and also, it's, it's, it's obvious that the building is, is not really viable as a business anymore. I've, and I've watched its decline in the last few years. It's just too short a season to sustain a, a market sandwich shop, general market or anything like that, and, and to, to, to make it a residence, it's absolutely necessary to, I think, raise the structure. It's apparent to me that that's the only choice, and to, and to rebuild it. I, on the record, I love it. I think it looks great. I've always loved going down there, and I think it's, I'm excited about it. I think it's, it's, it's perfect. It really is just perfect. It's, I'm happy to see it. When I saw it, I was, I was so pleased. I said, "That's exactly what that spot deserves," and, yeah.
Steve?
Bring the lobster roll back, though. They, they had an unbelievable lobster roll there.
Sub sandwich is what I'm saying.
Lobster and art.
As, uh, as Mr. Crockett pointed out, it is very useful to have these, uh, inspection reports and structural reports submitted to us. I mean, the, the highlights that I take out of this is, you know, trapped moisture, unventilated crawl space, um, uh, leaning pier supports are in danger of collapse, uh, timber walls currently leaning, uh, cracks in masonry structure, masonry walls are experiencing movement due to frost, and especially in an area so close to the ocean where you're worried about salt erosion and erosion of the air, um, to, to, to restore this existing structure, as you pointed out, would just not be a very, um, it, it's not viable to do. Really need to raise and redo the structure. And, uh, I don't have any issue with this application.
Thank you. Ms. Chu?
I agree with the board. I think, you know, you have to do something, and this looks like a really good plan.
Um, the only, uh, couple comments I've got on is, number one, I, I would appreciate, in the future, we've had two of them today, which kind of a little bit concerns me, is that we're getting the final, the structural thing way too late.
Yeah, timing was, was an issue, try to get-
And it happens, I get it. Uh, I don't, but I, I know that, uh, that's an important piece. So, as, again, as we try to educate people as they're doing this, it really should be ahead of time, although I wouldn't hold that against the previous applicant, nor this applicant. Um, I do believe that the, the property obviously, uh, has outlived its usefulness. It's, it's, it's just what it is. I think highest and best use is certainly as a residence. Um, I think it's the desire to keep its personality. Uh, this is a lot for the app, and the designer, and thank you. And I don't think there's any, I, since, I haven't seen anything since seventy-one, since I've lived here, uh, where it's been viable, for, seems to have changed a lot, uh, of uses over the years. So, I, I feel number one has met easily. So, as far as number one is concerned, can I take a, a vote on meeting criteria number one? One in favor? That's unanimous. The criteria-
Sure, just that from your point. It, it makes it a lot easier for us to come into a meeting prepared if we have this. Um, it could make our decision process a lot easier because we do get these things in advance. So, if we have these reports coming in, we can see structurally it doesn't look good. So, it doesn't help us, kind of, being prepared for what we're looking at.
Uh, this is a question from Mr. Longstaff, and, and maybe more importantly, insurance-wise, when you're dealing with floodplains, if this property is above design, structurally to be above the flood height, does that eliminate the need for flood insurance, or you still have to get flood insurance? Do you know?
No, it doesn't eliminate the need for flood insurance. It simply makes your premium affordable.
Okay.
Because you're compliant with the floodplain ordinance.
Yeah, and this, this may be a, just with my experience in that area, this, this may be a good candidate for a letter of map amendment to, to actually have the ability to not have that portion of your insurance. It's what the letter of map amendment does. You have to pay a man like Jim Fisher or whoever, surveyor, to come in and determine whether it meets, you know, if they can successfully remove the property from the floodplain.
Is that a loma? Are you talking about a loma? Is that what?
Yeah, loma, yeah.
Well, there isn't even an elevation certificate on this right now.
What, what?
Well, here's, here's the problem with that, though. Um, because I can't remember what the new proposed flood elevation was, and I know we've probably looked at that, Mr. Gates, but I cannot remember what it was. I believe it was higher, the, the base flood elevation was higher.
We did look at it. We looked at it extensively, and, uh, and I don't have any, uh, I mean, I think it's a couple of feet.
Yeah, so, so the problem with getting a loma is you might get it, you might get it today, but it wouldn't be worth anything when new map changes come in. So, I don't think he can bring in enough fill to get up above, really.
It wouldn't look right. It wouldn't flow right. So, I, I think, I think the best bet is to build it in conformance with the floodplain ordinance as it stands today. Um, and then I think you'll be grandfathered when the map changes come. I'm not an insurance agent. I didn't even play one on TV, so.
But you won't be done in there.
He, he played one on TV.
No, I played one in real life.
I don't, I don't pretend to know, but I've, I've been told that it, it would receive grandfathered status because it was compliant at the time it was permitted.
Yeah, I would encourage you to, if there is no elevation certificate, have one done on it, because that's gonna be a big determining factor to help you if the bank decides that it's gonna be in the floodplain. It's gonna be, they're, they've tried, they've tried putting it in place the last couple of years, and they failed miserably. So, that's why it's not in place right now, but it is coming. And just, for prudent measures for yourself, I would get an elevation certificate done.
Mr. Crockett, because what, if, if it is approved and he builds it, he's gonna have to get one because it's part of the floodplain permit that he'll have to get. So, yeah, he'll, he'll have that.
Yeah, I didn't realize that was the case, but you definitely wanna have that. It makes it that much easier when you do get that request saying that you need to get flood insurance, that you can then prove where you are.
That, thank you. I, uh, I wasn't expecting to, uh, learn even more, uh, and, and I appreciate it, and thanks.
Yeah, we deal with it on the insurance side.
I'm pleased this is recorded, so I can go back and look at it.
We can't, we can't even get a quote for flood insurance without that.
It, it's, it's horrible. And it's been delayed last for four years now, I think.
Well, they, they put it in place, and everybody's, everybody's property was becoming in the flood zone because a bottom part of the property that the house sat, thirty feet above, um, one portion of the property sat, which was five feet in the floodplain, so they rezoned the whole thing in the floodplain and jack people's premiums while people, everybody bought it, but cost them a couple thousand dollars to fight it, and they all won, more or less. So, and they all had those elevation certificates, which helped them dearly when this, when this happened.
Thank you. We'll do that.
Okay, so the next one is, the var, the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property. And, uh, why don't we study it with Mr. Crockett?
This property is very unique.
We're not sad.
Well, look at, look at the pictures, and the rakes and stuff that's still inside there, on one of these pictures and stuff.
What's inside there?
It looks like they just, like, left it, and just kinda left everything inside. So, it's definitely a neat property. I don't think it's, it's viable. I mean, it's got a lot of issues that really need to be remedied.
Yeah. Uh, I agree, yes, lot size, you're right, it's built skew. Um, yeah, I, I agree.
I concur. I have nothing to add.
I agree.
Uh, you know, come back to the reality that, uh, Mr. Longstaff mentioned, and the fact, even the parallelogram, this property, uh, it, I said it earlier, and I'll repeat it, it takes an, it takes an artist to sometimes see something that's beautiful and, uh, and make it beautiful, and I, a lot of people don't have that vision. Obviously, uh, there's probably a lot of people kicking themselves right now, saying, "We could've done that." Uh, because it, I think it's good, so I would agree, it's, um, it's definitely a unique property. Uh, the granting of variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
Do you wanna vote on that one?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much, thank you. Uh, I'm in favor of, I mean, number two, thank you. That's unanimous. Let's come back to number three, the granting of the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Mr. Crockett?
It can't hurt it. The fact that you're putting the sign up there, hopefully you don't get people stopping by to stop at the market.
But I, I think that's a great idea in perceiving the significance of the historical factor of the building. But, yeah, it, it's, nothing that you do is gonna be probably worse than what it's at right now.
No, I think it's just, I think it's preserving the character of the neighborhood. I think it's, um, yeah, I think it's, it's, it's just a-
Gigantic improvement, so.
And it's an improvement, but you're keeping it the same. I, I love it. I do.
I concur.
I agree.
Okay, and the last item is the, uh, oh, oh, vote, thank you. No, it's just, okay, I'm in favor of it, number three, thank you. Sorry for that. Um-
You're gonna give a buzz in just that piece.
The hardship is not a result of an action taken by the applicant or prior owner. I give him a chance to be meaningful, start getting in.
No, I mean, the prior owners had it as commercial. They tried to use it as commercial. Not something that's viable down there as commercial any longer, so, uh, making it residential, I think, enhances the neighborhood and makes it more in line with what the property probably should've been used for in the first place.
I agree. I have nothing to add.
I agree. Nothing to add.
I agree.
And again, just going back to the, the precedent, uh, buying the property does not, uh, trigger that regulation that's been case law at this point, so it's moot, but it is fairly recent case law. I don't know how long ago.
Yeah.
But that's an important thing, because I, I know in the past, I've seen these things where that has been, that has stopped applicants that have come before us. So, that's why I bring it up, because in the past, there were times where that decision to buy said, "Well, you obviously bought it, so, you know, you created or designed there." Well, that, that's been eliminated as, as a technical issue. And I think that's really important because, um, as you know, this is an expensive process, just to go through the designs and everything else. And, um, so, that being said, uh, let's, I'm in favor of four. That's unanimous. And now, let's come back to the, uh, the primary, uh, motion. Do I have a motion regarding?
Um, move to accept application two, five, six, eight.
As opposed?
As opposed. Second?
Can I?
One other thing on that, just one quick question. The, I thought I had a question. You don't intend to use this as a rental property. We can't post conditions on it, but do you, is your intent to use it as a rental property?
No. And just to reiterate, that's not a requirement, uh, it's an honest question, but-
It's an honest question, and, and the honest answer is, is the simple answer, and if I were to elaborate, it would be, anything beyond that, we haven't even thought of.
Great, thanks. And, and I think you had something, Mr. Longstaff, before we vote?
I can bring it up in the, at the next appeal.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, so, uh, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Mike, I can do it.
Mike, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Any, no, in favor? That's unanimous. So, we're done, part one.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's the tough one.
Thank you.
Don't go away.
What I like about this is I don't have to change any of the files on the computer because-
And it's, keep on going, huh?
It's the same, same property.
Mark's like a free fall over here.
Yeah, kinda. I'm not gonna, I'm not going to, uh, let's just, we have a, a break here, but we do have one member that needed to, uh, step away for a second, so we'll just slow down a little bit, and I don't wanna take a recess because I use leaves up much more time than- to take a recess because I usually use up much more time than necessary. Okay, so we're now going to go to the second appeal regarding the trust of Deborah Gates, and it's appeal number... I lost my...
Twenty-five, six, seven.
Appeal number twenty-five, six, seven. It's a special exception for an in-home occupation, and Mr. Longstaff, is he ready to start with on this?
The proposed plan that's been presented is conforming with regards to the space requirements for a home occupation, and again, it would have to meet the standards for special exception as well as home occupation, which you guys are... I think the board is familiar with. We've had several of those. I'll... I've got one other thing to add, but I would like to defer to Mr. Gates to be able to explain how he intends to operate the home occupation and address your questions first, and then I'll come back to my question, my issue, if you will.
Why don't we start with... I'll give you a overview of the use, and we'll go from there, okay? Of the front part of the property. Where did you go with that?
The front room in the property would be an art gallery that would be open by appointment. You would be able to be able to make an appointment. I included this in the application on given days of the week from certain hours of the day, but it would not be open to passersby to come in and say, "Hey, what's going on? Would like to come in." So, it's open by appointment only, and otherwise, it would be to exhibit my paintings. Occasionally, I work in three dimensions, so it would be sculpture as well, but always artwork. And it's as simple as that. The works would be for sale, and is that...
That's perfect.
Okay.
Absolutely perfect. So, why don't we start with the first one? I'll read it, and then you can read your response, okay?
Please.
The proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhelpful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation.
The art gallery will not create public safety problems. No problem created by the occupation of the art gallery will require... Am I on the right one?
A, I think. It's B, A that you would...
Pardon me. Pardon me. Apologize. Thank you. Pardon me. The gallery will not dispose of unsanitary or unhealthful products through the sewage water or air. The art gallery will have no exterior storage of materials. The gallery will operate in the home, in the room closest to Blackpoint Road. The home is a total of nineteen hundred... One thousand nine hundred and thirteen square feet. The art gallery space is three hundred and eighty-one square feet, slightly less than twenty percent of the total. The art for sale will be produced or assembled on the premises.
Great, thank you. And second is a B. The proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to the existing and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity.
The art gallery will be open by appointment. There should be no other unscheduled traffic. The standard gallery appointment usually involves a single customer, sometimes a couple. Occasionally, the persons making the appointment will want to bring an advisor, such as an interior decorator. In addition to the off-street parking provided to meet the normal requirements of the dwelling, three off-street parking spaces shall be provided for the maximum number of customers that the gallery will allow during peak operation.
C is... The proposed use will not create public safety problems, which is substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood, or require substantially greater degree of municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood.
The art gallery will not create public safety problems. No problem created by the occupation of the art gallery will require a substantially greater degree of fire or police protection than are required by existing neighborhood uses.
Okay, and the proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion, or have an adverse effect on the water supplies.
The art gallery will have no effect on sedimentation or erosion. Furthermore, the art gallery occupation will have no adverse effect on water supplies.
And the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development.
With respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development, the art gallery by design will be compatible with the historic use of the property and with the existing uses in the neighborhood. The art gallery will occupy the site of what has been for over eighty years a historic and nostalgic commercial space, Harman's Market later, Whitecaps. In fact, the applicant's and the art gallery's expressed desire is to maintain the appearance of the former market and to provide the neighborhood with a viable function for the space. Specifically, regarding the visual impact, the Whitecaps Sandwich Shop sign is currently on the building. It is a twenty-five square foot, two feet by one inch by... Two feet, one inch by twelve feet, four inches illuminated sign. The significant portion of it is... A significant portion of it is comprised of the Coca-Cola logo. For historic and nostalgic reasons, as well as maintaining an attractive visual impact, the applicant wants to restore the original Harman's Market sign and with it, replace the current sign. The Harman's sign is forty percent smaller, fifteen square feet, one foot, four inches by eleven feet, four inches, and is made of hand-painted wood.
Okay, and I think that's going to be something that we need to work a little bit around, that I think with Mr. Longstaff.
I appreciate it.
And the Shorelands, it's not in the Shorelands zone, but it's in a floodplain, so it doesn't... F doesn't apply. G, the applicant has sufficient right to their interest in purchasing the property.
Pardon me, I didn't hear.
You purchased the property, so you have right to it and interest.
Right, right, right.
And the applicant has technical and financial ability to meet the standards of section to comply with any additional imposed requirements set by the board, which we have no idea what that means, but...
No, I do, because, again, I have picked Mr. Longstaff's very generous brain, and I will read in what I wrote.
That's fine.
The applicant has the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section. The applicant understands her responsibility to comply and will comply with any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals.
Yeah, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to generation of noise and hours of operation.
The proposed use will absolutely be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood. The art gallery shall generate no nuisance such as offensive noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odors, heat, or glare. The hours of operation are by appointment from eleven AM to four PM Tuesday through Saturday.
Thank you. A couple of comments. I believe...
May I add one friendly, just quick thought?
Go free.
And that is, Mr. Gray, when I was invited to Howard and Marjorie's house to show them the plans and et cetera, et cetera, in relationship to noise, did say that he is a very early riser and a very early goer to bed, and we did have a nice conversation about his procedures that way, and we will do everything that we can to, you know, accommodate those, period.
Great, thank you. Now, this is the second part, which is home occupations. I didn't see that in your paperwork.
No, these are more just responsive type things that you can kind of go through just to make sure that he's... These are the standards for the home occupation.
Are these the ten standards?
Yeah.
I did my best to address them in the answers here.
That's okay. I'll read it in real quick, and we'll just go from there. The occupation of profession shall be carried on wholly within the principal structure of the building accessory.
Yes.
The home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary in use to the dwelling unit for residential purposes.
Absolutely.
No more than one person who is not a resident of the dwelling unit shall be employed in a home occupation.
Completely understand, yes.
Exterior signs shall be permitted in accordance with home occupation sign provisions under section twelve, sign regulations subsection...
I have read those.
This is the one that I... Mr. Chairman, if I may. This is the one that I wanted to bring up, because it's sort of a quandary. Mr. Gates wants to restore the original Harman's Market sign, which, as far as I can tell, really doesn't have anything to do with the art gallery home occupation. I mean, in other words, it doesn't say Mr. Gates Art Gallery. It says Harman's Market.
Well, right, exactly.
My point being this. The sign requirements in here are specifically in reference to the home occupation, and that only allows you a six-square-foot sign that would say art gallery, or, you know, whatever. My point being that you'd like to mount the Harman's Market sign similar to what's shown on the photograph for nostalgic reasons that have nothing to do with the home occupation.
Well, I'd very respectfully comment on that.
Okay.
And I...
Before you do, maybe I just... I'm kind of trying to get you an out here.
Okay.
So, don't shoot yourself in the foot.
Okay. I'd let him continue to talk first. Good, good.
No, 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 no. I just wanted to point that out, and I'll leave it up to the board to debate that issue, because, in other words, I don't think the board, because of that requirement that was just read, could approve a sign that said Marvin's Art Gallery that was fifteen square feet. However, there's already an existing sign on the building. He wishes to restore, for nostalgic reasons, one that says Harman's Market. It doesn't say anything about the home occupation. So, somewhere in there, my problem is I don't know how I can permit this unless it's a condition of an approval by the board.
So, if we said something to the extent that as long as the applicant remains, continues to keep the essence of what was originally there, and that would be the Harman's Market sign, we would be able to approve this?
More as a design feature, I think.
As a design feature.
Yeah, because it really doesn't speak... You have the right to have a sign that's six square feet that advertises your home occupation.
We're saying this is not a...
Whether or not you feel this does, the Harman's Market sign does or not, I don't, as a layperson out in public, don't see the direct correlation. So, to me, it's more of a design feature for nostalgic purposes that you wish to kind of keep or actually... What's the word?
Reestablish.
Reestablish. Yeah, kind of reestablish or bring back, and so...
Restore.
Yeah, and so normally, you know, I mean, if somebody had an old historic barn in the rural farm district that had some... You know how they used to paint the big signs on the barn? You know, you would have the right, I think, to maintain that and restore it if it was faded, even though wall signs are not necessarily... That large are not necessarily permitted. This is kind of along those lines, but I don't have a clear path to say yes or no.
I do like the Budweiser sign.
The Budweiser sign.
You could have a Mott's sign up.
If that was still on the building, I would buy that from you.
Mr. Longstaff?
Yes.
Could... I mean, I have a little bit of a problem with the Harman's Market sign, too, because I think the Harman's Market sign's probably going to get people to stop there to think it's a market again, but if you wanted to put something like signifying Harman's, I don't know if maybe just putting the name Harman and not saying what it is. You've got an art gallery there, you've got the sign up. I don't know.
Well, I'll throw a curve at you as we go along.
Yeah, this is kind of a tough one.
Let me get through the remainder of these, and then we'll kind of circle around back the whole issue of the signage and the occupation, because, like you said, it's... There shall be no exterior display, no exterior stor... Am I skipping one here?
Nope, nope. That's the right one.
There shall be no exterior display, no exterior storage of materials, no other exterior indication of a home occupation or variation from the residential character of the principal building, except as expressly permitted by the district regulations of this ordinance. This prohibition shall not apply to the storage of lobster traps.
Yes, I understand. We understand, absolutely.
No nuisance shall be generated, including but not limited to noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odors, heat, or glare.
Yes.
The traffic generated by such home occupation shall not increase the volume of traffic so as to create a traffic hazard or disturb the residential character of the immediate neighborhood.
Yeah, that's absolutely true. We'd love to do something to prevent people from using it as a turnaround, which is what they do now.
Yeah. In addition to the off-street parking provided to meet the normal requirements of the dwelling, adequate off-street parking shall be provided for the vehicles of employees and the vehicles maximum number of users or customers. I think you answered that one with your earlier comments.
Yes.
It's not using more than twenty percent of the dwelling floor unit, is it? Math is done. And occupation may include retail sales, subject to following limitations. Again, the math has been taken care of on that. And the sale product is limited to products or articles produced, assembled or produced, and you're not... So, that means eleven is not applicable, and twelve is not applicable. Motor vehicle repairs and... So, if anybody has any questions on that.
I think Mr. Gates did want to address that, that number four criteria. I kind of cut him off.
And actually, if you don't mind, what I'd like to do is jump into another thought process with this. I think there's an inherent challenge with limiting your time to appointment only. I think that create... If people are coming up to your door and you choose to let them in, are you violating what you got approved by not having a prearranged appointment? I think you'd be better off or better served by us just allowing you to use the property as a home occupation without putting a limitation of by appointment only.
It doesn't have to be advertised that way, but...
In other words, I think the challenge we've got... This goes with the property, so when this approval's in, it's not with you, it's with the property. And my concern for you down the road is, let's say, for instance, that people... You become well-known, and all of a sudden, we've got another one, Zol Homer, kicking around, and people are coming to see you, and you go, "Sorry, I need to make an appointment an hour earlier with you so you can come here to meet what I signed or agreed to," and you get... I just think you're better off saying, "This is what it is. It's an art gallery, and how you pick your times is your call." I just think it simplifies it. And then that would also allow you to go one step further with the Harman's Market, and you could do then a... To keep the character, and then do again a six-foot sign and art gallery. It kind of accomplishes both things, in my opinion, allowing for the signage for the historic benefit, adding an art gallery, which acknowledges what you do or whatever you want to write on there, I don't really care, and opens it up to not limiting you to specific times that are pre-scheduled, which I just think is a nightmare to manage. You know, closed signs solve that problem, but if you choose on a Saturday that's busy and somebody wants to come in and see you, and you've got nothing else to do, and you want to show your work, I don't feel it's necessarily wise to limit yourself to that. I don't know how the other board members feel about it.
Well, the chair's already recognized that you've had a conversation with the aboutter, and he's kind of given you the times that he'd like to see you not be open. So, if you're not... If you're kind of quote-unquote doing appointment only, but you have normal hours where is what this gentleman would like to see you have, and you can just tell us that you think eight o'clock to four o'clock or whatever, it may be what coincides with what he told you he'd like to see you close, so he doesn't have foot traffic and he can go to bed early. We're generally fine with that, and that doesn't limit you, because what the chair's trying to present is, if we approve this for what you're asking for, it could be kind of a kick in the butt for you.
Yeah, it ties our hands, and I appreciate very much, we appreciate very much, your thinking much further down the road. I'm attempting to... I'm attempting to give you a snapshot of what's really going to happen and, and it, and, and, and of course, I appreciate what you're saying and the advice you're giving and I accept it.
And it was about the concept of the signage where I, I would suggest that we, let me word this appropriately. I always suggest as part of the requirement of the approval that we maintain the original style of the property by having a Harmon's Market sign, uh, the size that's requested in the plan, but adding to it a sign of your choosing that would flow with the, the Harmon sign, letting people know that this is an art gallery. Types in that six-foot, it could be one by twelve, it could be, whatever you choose, um.
So Longstaff, what are, what are your thoughts on that?
One by six.
Well, i- if you did it that way, I think maybe it would, it could possibly pass the straight face test by, by limiting the art gallery if, well, let me back up. Do we know yet if there's an original sign or is it gonna be a replication of the original sign?
Uh, no is too strong of a word. I've had, since we last talked, I.
You haven't verified.
I have, and I have not put eyes on it, I've been told again it exists, and that's.
He, he's been told that the original Harmon's Market sign exists somewhere in somebody's barn. We, we haven't been able to verify that, but, but his intent was if that wasn't the case or if it was too far gone to, to use, he would, he would actually create a replica of that sign, okay? Um, so, so if it was a repli-, or even if it was the original one, if you felt like, I, I don't even know if you intend to advertise the art gallery with any signage out front, I just don't know what your plans are, you haven't really discussed that with.
I can briefly, uh, tell you what I think or what I, if the appropriate time is now.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, we, we discussed this very briefly. Art galleries, and I did a little bit of homework, it's the one piece, I hadn't finished my homework on, uh, this afternoon, looking up historical famous art galleries in this country. Uh, the most famous one is a gallery known as Two Ninety-One, which introduced artists like Matisse and Picasso to the United States and New York. The gallery's name was Two Ninety-One, it was the, uh, we've all seen this and heard this now, it was the address of the building at Fifth Avenue. It had no art gallery involved with it at all, it was just Two Ninety-One. That's the way I view the art gallery signage view of the Harmon's Market sign is, now obviously, people will drive down the road and say, may I have a, a lobster roll? I mean, I, in time, they won't and you, and, uh, depending on who you talk to, you'd like that time to be right now, I mean, immediately. We'd love to have people think it's only an art gallery. If I had my total druthers, and I think, I don't wanna shoot myself in the foot.
You're not.
But, uh, uh, I think that this gentleman, uh, sort of expressed, I think, uh, the state of my thinking of it, standing here right now, which as opposed to having Harmon's Market, it's known as Harmon's. I mean, that's what, that's the Proust neck song that they sing at the yacht club, uh, every summer.
I'm familiar with those secret meetings.
Yeah, I know, those secret meetings. I believe that they, you know, they, in it is Harmon's, it's not Harmon's Market. So if I had my druthers, and I've, and I'm, I don't mean to be so arrogant, it would, the sign would be Harmon's. And then.
I think that solves a lot of issues for you as well.
Yeah, so, uh, that's, and then we don't have any art, it says exactly what everybody who, and I can't speak for everybody, but I think it addresses the historical, the sentimental, the nostalgic, uh, side of it and says it.
And as long as it's the original or a replica of it, I'm thinking Mr. Longstaff probably wouldn't have a problem with it.
But I, I think where I would not have a problem is if it was somehow mentioned in the approval by the board. Cause then I could throw you guys under the bus and I wouldn't have to take the heat.
And it, it would also, I'll just, it would also be, you know, the sign is about that by eleven feet or whatever it's in. It would be as though we chopped off the market, so it would be still that and down to six and a half feet or something. So it's getting close, I'm not, anyway, you get.
I like the idea, it's my idea.
Okay, great. So I think we've gone through those, so let's come back to the motion, uh, that could also be a snow break to. I haven't opened the public hearing on this, so let me open the public hearing, but no letters on this, uh, I'm opening the public hearing. Mr. Gray, would you like to speak again or are you okay? Thank you, sir. Anybody else just to speak on this? Now, close the public hearing. Oh, yeah, one more question, sir.
Um, just a couple of questions for you.
Sure, please.
Are you in septic or sewer down there?
Sewer.
Okay. What, with your artwork, you said you were gonna be working with three-dimensional, you're probably gonna be working with paints and things. What's your method for disposing of the materials?
Well.
And how much are you thinking you're gonna have at any given time?
It's extraordinarily minor, but the way you dispose of them, and here again, I've done, uh, my homework as far as how you dispose of paints in Scarborough. There's, there are a couple of days a year and, uh, you store in, uh, you know, uh, Ansi standard, uh, containers, such things as mineral spirits or old paint. And then on the days that you can take such items to be properly disposed of, that's the way you handle it.
You've already done your homework on it, that's good, cause Scarborough has a lot of different intricacies.
Yeah, yeah, no, you, you don't, uh, I mean, that's what I meant when I said it doesn't add anything to the water system and that sort of thing, I don't, it's not something you put down drains. Um, and that's not to say I only work with oil paints, I mean, I work with acrylic paints too, and those are a little bit harder to control when you're cleaning a brush, uh, as, you know, the water does.
You may be working with paint and stuff too.
Yeah, well, no, I.
No, okay.
Carving, that sort of thing.
Other questions from the board? So let me throw a motion out there and tell me if, how you'd like to change it.
Yes, sir. Sorry, one more quick question. The applicant has expressed a concern and I don't know if we can alleviate that for him when we're approving this of that becoming a turnaround.
I don't know how to really solve that, uh, other than.
I have, I have a question, I don't know if this can be addressed or not, and Ted and I have, uh, spoken about this just as we're standing outside, um, and accomplishing it in some way landscape-wise.
That's what I was getting at.
But the, the, the trick of course is, the property as it exists now is five feet from, from the road, uh, and I don't know how to say this simply, and it's, uh, without being too wordy, but, um. It would sort of, it would sort of, somewhere down the road, I'm just gonna say it, uh, require being able to chop up parts of the town's road there and work with the town to, uh, not the real road, but it goes way wide.
The right-of-way.
The right-of-way, uh, where currently, and that for years it's always been, if you've seen a car parked in front of Harmon's, it's on the right-of-way, it's not on their property, uh, or on our property. So it would require whatever going forward we would have to do to enable, uh, see, I don't know, I'm just in territory, but it's something that we thought about, about how to address the town that way in the future.
What you're kinda mentioning sounds like maybe re-establishing some vegetation, a vegetative buffer along the right-of-way.
Right.
Off the road, but where they normally would have, it's like dirt from the edge of the, the pavement to the, the front of the store.
Front door, yeah.
So you would re-establish some landscaping in that area to kind of discourage any turning around.
Right, some kind of curb or.
And that's acceptable with.
Yeah, yeah, with a quick call to Mike Shaw in, in, in a sketch, I think that could be handled very easily, so.
Then they alleviate that problem for you as well.
Every, every property.
Scarborough loves plants in front of buildings.
Every property has that, that right-of-way technically, but people use it and know it and are responsible for it.
Right.
And so, I don't see as an issue.
Okay, so that's not related to this? Okay, thank you.
Uh, so I'd like to move that we approve, uh, appeal number, sorry, is that again? Twenty-five sixty-seven, as requested, uh, with a couple of codices regarding, uh, uh, use and signage. Uh, the first being that the use would be, uh, uh, not limited in hours, that, well, uh, limited in hours from eight to four, uh, if the applicant chooses from eight to four, Monday through Friday. And I have.
Does that coincide with what the other gentleman had said to you?
Yeah, absolutely, and, and our conversation was casual insofar as just please try to be not so noisy after six o'clock or something.
Well, just let me, let me kinda rephrase that as, as, um, apologize for winging it, but, uh, the, the, the at-home occupation will be used, uh, at times, uh, at the discretion of the applicant. Then, because I don't wanna, somebody might wanna come over at seven at night.
I was gonna say, or by, or by appointment, you could say norm, during normal business hours or by appointment.
That would be perfect.
That, that allows an evening visit by two people in one car, which when, you know, if that happens, it doesn't, you don't have to feel like you're skirting the approval here.
Right, well, one of the things I'm noticing, I think that's perfectly worded and that's what I just said. And, uh, yeah, the other is the signage, uh, would be, uh, bring back or, or keep the, um, Harmon flavor, uh, that, I don't wanna restrict you on it, because I think it's time, you may, you may shift, but the, the, it reflects some of the history of what the property was. And leave that to the discretion of our illustrious, uh, code enforcement officer who's determined, and that would be outside of the scope of the standard two-by, uh, the standard six-foot sign. So that, that would be separate from the six-foot sign and I would allow a six-foot sign if the applicant so choose.
Call it historical aesthetics.
That's beautiful, historicals as, and, but again, separate and distinct from the use of the sign. So that gives you the ability to put a sign up if you'd like, uh, in the future. Again, this is tied to the property, so we don't wanna have you come back for something later on. As we said from the beginning, we try to work with people to make it the right answer as opposed to, uh, good or bad. And certainly you seem like a gentleman that, um, probably follows the rules to a T. Um, that's not necessarily always good, so, so leave it at that. And, and that's my motion is, uh.
Second.
Second, you understand what I'm saying, the, the board understand what I'm saying? The applicant understand what I'm saying?
Yes, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, you support it with that?
Do you wanna, do you wanna, Mr. Chairman, do you wanna make sure that we've allowed the, if Deborah so wishes to make lobster rolls, we wanna be able to? Just wanted to make sure that was.
Okay. Just for the folks at home, that was a thumbs down.
Okay, so that's the motion, as in, uh, do I have a second on my motion? Oh, you already did, great. And, uh, discussion on the motion. Seeing none in favor, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Congratulations, uh, best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Glad you're, very glad you're back and, uh, doing something nice for the community, I think, so.
Good to be back, thank you.
Okay, uh, that's the last item on the agenda other than board comments and, uh, code enforcement officer comments. I'll let the board comment, come, any comments from board, just welcome Karen, glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your first vote.
Yeah, right.
Something like jumping right in, right?
I'm expecting that, I'll take it.
Uh, anybody else wish to speak, Mr.?
Wanna welcome Mr. Richard back too.
That's right.
A short, a brief hiatus, that's my, my, my sending him a hiatus for a short period of time.
I, if the board could indulge me for just a second, I've got, uh.
Could you do me a favor and just take them outside for us?
Folks? Folks, if you could just go outside to talk, we're still, we're still on here.
Okay. You already got your approvals, not much you can do now.
Okay.
And once in a while I think it's just, it's great, today's been a great meeting.
Yeah.
Um, yes, sir.
Yeah, so I, I, I had a, um, an issue come before me, so I just wanted to propose sort of a theoretical to the board, just to get your sense of how you might feel about this particular appeal. The appeal would actually be coming to you next month, it wasn't able to get on the agenda for this month, it came in after the twentieth. But because, uh, the situation is that there's a real estate transaction that's underway, house is under contract. Uh, a, a problem was discovered during the, uh, disclosure phase of the real estate transaction, as happens so often. Um, when examining the file, it was discovered that, uh, this particular property had received a limited reduction of yard size variance approval by the board i- in and around two thousand and three. Um, approximately six months later, a building permit was issued, a little less than six months later, a building permit was issued, um, uh, for that, uh, variance, that limited reduction of, of yard size variance. It was issued in error because the variance had not been recorded, okay? So when you guys approve a variance, as you know, it has to be recorded in the registry of deeds, uh, within ninety days.
By the applicant.
By the applicant, and we have to receive proof of that recording. And that was not checked or done. And so the applicant applied for the building permit, built the, it was what amounted to a bulkhead for a entrance into a foundation, which was slightly over the, the setback line on the property. Um, years have gone by, it's two thousand and sixteen, they wanna sell the property, that was discovered, um, they asked what they could do and I said, that's a strange case, I don't know, I will consult with the town's attorney. I did, um, and some of the options that were presented included, um, the applicant actually coming back to the board for reapproval of a variance that was granted. Uh, and, um, and to see if the board would reapprove that same variance, even though the structure had been built after the fact. Um, the problem being, and this is the, the thing that sort of, normally, as, as you guys have probably heard me say, you can't get a variance for something after the fact. You can't, you can't build something and then go get a variance for it. The, the difference here is that the town issued a building permit on which the applicant relied, not understanding or not knowing that, not realizing that the, the variance hadn't been recorded, needed to be recorded, they were issued a building permit. If you're issued a building permit, you're gonna build.
Right.
And so they did, and nothing, it was never picked up. So now we've, we've sort of had a hand in creating this difficulty as, as the town, you know, the town. And so one of the recommendations from the attorney, there were, there were three options, the one that the, the applicant would like to pursue is to come for a variance sort of after the fact to, um, correct this problem. I just wanna know how, how you guys feel about something like that, if that happens. I haven't mentioned a property, I have not mentioned an owner, so.
I'll be candid with you, I personally don't think it should even come back to the board. I think it should be acceptable because of the air over the town, and so I would, and we could even vote on it, I suppose, if we wanted to. But to me, the issue is, it's, it's moot. It, the, the, it, it meets two, it, there's two issues, number one, the time, the length of time is over thirteen years. So to me, the, you, nobody dealt with it in thirteen years from the town, nobody could be too upset about it. Number two, the town gave a, a permit, um, to retroactively go back thirteen years and try and re-establish and rebuild what took place or didn't take place. There are many occasions in the history of our town that we know of, going back a couple, three code enforcement officers ago, maybe even five, whatever you wanna pick. That, there was some stuff that was sort of dropped off the way, didn't happen in two thousand and three necessarily, but there's some history of, of the, of some sloppiness back earlier. And the town has basically said, okay. I, I think that sort of applies here personally, I don't, I don't know what our legal rights are or responsibilities are, but from a practical point of view, I, I don't even see why they'd have to waste the two hundred and fifty dollars, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Are you looking at this from a legal standpoint because of consultant?
Yeah, but, yeah, because I can't, I can't, I can't approve, um, I can't clear up the file. But the, the problem is the file isn't whole because the variance never got recorded. The way to, the way to rec, the rate it's corrected is to have a recorded variance.
Can the manager just do a, uh, doesn't the manager have the authority to be able to do a letter of agreement or what is it, consent?
Can do a consent agreement, but the consent agreement should never, generally never be given to allow a violation, okay? A consent agreement should be given to, to allow someone to correct a violation in a certain timeframe that's, you know, rather than to say, right now, right here, right now, you correct it, we're gonna give you six months, we're going to, you know, you know, set, set some terms up.
you know, set, set some terms up for it," and to also reduce any penalties for, uh, the violation. It should never be, a consent agreement is not a, a vehicle to, to allow you to buy a violation, basically. There's another tool called a non-action or a no-action letter. That's another, and again, these are the three, these are the three paths that were laid out by the town's attorney, to me. His, his suggestion was that reissuing the variance is actually probably the most correct way to go, although any of the three could potentially resolve the problem. As you probably know, and as I'm sure Ms. Schup, Ms. Schup knows, um, some title attorneys don't want to see a non-action letter, they won't accept a non-action letter, some, some title companies will. So it, it, that may or may not resolve the situation. A consent agreement doesn't really resolve the situation, it only, it only sets out some, some terms for how it can be dealt with.
And if we can do with you, probably the term I was looking for is non-action agreement. And I, I, I don't know what the board feels, but I would go with a non-action agreement and not even have them come forward. But that's me, I don't know what the other board members think.
So I have a couple of questions, Brian. Is it possible, uh, so they applied for the variance, they're granted the variance, it needed to be recorded, it did not get recorded.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, when they applied for the building permit, it was never checked whether it was recorded, and they were issued the permit anyway. So ultimately, the, the person at fault was the applicant who did not record it in the registry of deeds.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it was the error on the town to grant the permit, but the ultimate responsibility was for the applicant. Um, is it possible to just have the applicant, uh, record the variance in the registry of deeds now?
It would have to be redated.
Yeah, because you've got that certain timeframe, it's gotta be done by.
That's basically what I'm saying, and I almost think you could do it administratively, rather than even, you know, even, if, if we presented the paperwork and the board so chose, I think they could, if, if everything was the same, if there were no new issues, the difference being here, or the major issue that I'm concerned with, is that in, in the case of any variance, there's a public notice element that needs to be upheld. The neighbors need to know that they're, they're coming for this variance, okay? Whether or not they oppose it is irrelevant, you guys can still approve or, or deny anything despite how much, um, support or, or, um, otherwise there is for it. But it allows them to be heard, and if we just, if we don't go through the, the normal channels, and, and we can certainly talk about any kind of, um, um, reduction in, I, and I don't even want to go, I don't even want to go talk about the fee thing.
If we did it, and let them come before us, we could backdate it to the timeframe that they needed to have it done by, or...
No, 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 no.
Okay.
You, you can't, all you can do is issue a new appeal, a new approval.
You can make them take it out.
With you, yeah, we can make them take it out. But, but the problem with that is, they got a permit to put it, you see what I'm saying?
And there's a law, yeah.
This, this is the problem. Yes, the ultimate, in, in, in primary responsibility was theirs to record the variance, that didn't get done. We're also, we also have an obligation to check that, we didn't do that. We also, you know, issued a permit, which we shouldn't have done, and we did. So there is some, there is definitely some responsibility on the town's part, um, it doesn't relieve them of that, of their responsibility, so there was failure on both sides, okay?
Right, and in this case, then, um, we need, they need to, I think they would need to have, um, they would need to be reissued, reissued a variance, and if they have to come before us, then they have to come before us.
One of the questions is this, has this been an action taken by an owner or prior owner?
You don't want to go down that path.
With the limited reduction of yard size, one of the criteria is, has construction started? But the response is gonna be an honest one. Yes, a permit was issued by the town for this project, that, that's why it was constructed. So you can, you can use that as part of what you're, you know, you're approving, it's the, the resp, nobody's hiding any of that.
You also said those burden of proof still rested on the applicant to report that.
But the, but...
I mean, the town aired in, in issuing the building permit that the burden of proof...
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
So let's carry on.
But who's, who's more at fault? You know, I mean, everybody shares in this. I'm just asking you guys what you think about it.
By doing it as a non-action, non-actional item, which I've seen a hundred times, I cannot tell you the number of times I've seen towns just go next.
Yeah, but I'm seeing it, shaking of the head down there for the non-action, so...
That's okay, but I, I, we'll talk about that a little bit, but my attitude, I've seen it a hundred times, it's insured over all the time, it's covered all the time, the question is, does it make it legal again? The answer would be yes, it does.
No, it doesn't.
Well, once we said, once we give a non-action, we would say we're not gonna...
The, the approval of the variance makes it legal, a non-action letter does not make it legal.
But it means that there's no change is gonna, we're basically saying the town...
All the non-action, let me be clear, a non-action letter says the town chooses to do nothing about this at this time, it does not waive its right to pursue enforcement action at a later date. It never re, well, they're wrong, 'cause the way it's supposed to be, and you can look it up in the main...
I believe it, I just see them different than that.
It's wrong. You cannot, you, you never waive the town's rights, because the violation exists. You're not saying it's right because it's not, you can't, you'd be lying. That's why, if you've seen it different, it's a, it's not worth the paper it's written on, because you can't say something is right if it's not.
But you can say we're not going to act on it.
You can.
That's what I've seen.
At this time.
I've seen not, I've seen the not this time issue there. I've seen, without that.
Yep, that's how it's...
I've seen it say, "We're not going to take action on this."
Right.
And, and sometimes it usually accompanies with a fifty-dollar fine.
Yep.
I've, I've seen that.
But I don't even believe in the fine, because that's, that's akin to buying the violation.
Right.
I don't believe you should be able to buy a violation. You're either in violation or you're not.
The challenge is, and this, this is a no-win situation, we, we agree with it, we're really violating our own, we don't agree with it, we're gonna end up in court. And there's, and, and the reason why they went forward, I think I even know this one, to be honest with you, I don't know the names, but if I remember correctly, it was because the basement needed to have an access, it was large enough, because there's a bedroom downstairs, I think that was the, the issue, and that's why I went by...
Well, without discussing the details of it...
But it, it was something that needed to be done safely.
I'm, I'm just throwing it out there as a theoretical, if you were, if you had a case where this was, the, the variance was issued, it wasn't recorded, a permit was granted, the structure was built, and, and now discovered later that the variance wasn't recorded.
The worst thing that could happen is bring that into this board.
Who's applying, the seller?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah, the homeowner.
So they can sell it.
Right.
Right, 'cause they need to remedy the problem before they can sell it, or the buyer can buy it with the problem and inherit it.
Yeah, that's, that's basically it.
So the future seller, someone buys it now, ten years later they sell it, they still have the same problem.
Unless, unless something happens.
No, if, if, oh, oh, if we do nothing, yes, yeah.
Like the no-action letter.
The no-action statement.
There won't be a future seller, because, because they can't sell it now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, does the town feel a responsibility to fix the error? And to me, to fix the error is to follow the process and say, "We messed up, but you also did too."
To come back, we can't fix it, though.
Yeah, but it's gonna be denied if you try to bring it back before.
But do you have to deny it because you're taking an error by your own employee?
Well, technically, it's not that either, it's, it's, we're talking about a, to me, we're talking about a, a technicality that can be blown out of proportion or managed. And I don't, if for thirteen years, no one's had a problem with it, and it's a technicality that can be cleared with a simple adat, attachment to the deed, that eliminates the issue, acknowledges the issue, people have already heard it, because it went before the board, so it's not a matter of disclosure, it's already been disclosed, it went before the board, it's already been heard, so the neighbors don't need to be redisclosed. There's, there's, there's an error that took place, uh, a, a, a good example is, is one neighborhood, every single house is skewed, every single deed is wrong in one neighborhood, every deed.
Another good example is what happened three years ago over off, um, Sawyer Road, where the gentleman had built the property for the lady, but built it outside of the guidelines, and I know you had sent him back to Tom for discussion on that, and I know they were fined for doing it, but it was not...
That's how it ended. It ended with a fine and a, and a non-action letter. Now, that's how they did it.
I remember that one.
But I, I'm just saying, it's a slippery slope, once you get, once you put the board into a spot where we're gonna have to, especially in something as, as reasonable as that guy, if it's a variance appeal, it's a little bit different conversation, but we're really talking about limited reduction here, and we're now bending the rules on a limited reduction so we can get past a mistake, I don't think that's good business. I just, I just don't follow that as, as a sound, we, we, we've got a problem there, we all know it. The answer is, we have a problem and it's there, we all know, so the way you fix it is make it legal, and I think that's something that can be done internally, I don't think it needs to come to this.
I would agree with you, if it comes back before us, we're denying it.
I don't think you can do it, I don't think you can do it any other way. I just think it's something that the town can, the town can acknowledge it took place, and, and how it's dealt with is in the town, to me, is irrelevant. It's, it's, we're talking about a, a technical issue thirteen years later, I, I just don't know.
I think the town's worried about a lawsuit, right, down the line, and you want to protect yourself as much as you can.
I'm not really worried about a lawsuit, and that's, that's, that's not the point. The point is that, I guess what I'm having a hard time, I, I understand what you're saying, but what I don't buy is, I've already checked with legal counsel, okay? I don't see any attorneys at the table. I checked with legal counsel, and he says, "We can do this." Why aren't we doing it?
Well, you have, you have three choices.
You have three choices. One of those is the one I'm presenting to you today.
I don't like that one.
And you don't like that one?
I like the other two.
I just want, if you don't like it, that's...
I mean, it's what the board...
That's what I'll take back. Brian, I don't know if I like that one either, bring it back for us.
There's two no votes.
It's, it's, it's the board's call, so, so here's, here's, I'll take my position, we'll literally take a vote on it.
Okay.
I do not believe they should come forward, this will be a non, non-binding vote.
Stop hold.
Stop hold.
I do, I do not believe that something that is an administrative issue that could, that is, that can be handled administratively internally through the town manager and the code enforcement office needs to come back this time, this specific circumstance. I wouldn't say everyone, but I would say in this specific circumstance, based on what the fact that you presented, it is not prudent, some president, he sees that term, it is not prudent to bring this forward to the board, because it's gonna put the board in a position that, that it's going to compromise its integrity, and I don't think that's a good idea under any circumstances.
I would agree, I agree with Mike.
What, what would be the circumstances to you approve that?
I don't think there is one.
Are we doing the stop hold?
Yeah, it's just stop hold, I'm all in favor of not doing it here. I'm all in favor of doing it here.
I mean, I feel, it was, the problem started with them, they started the problem. Whether any problems happened after that is, is, to me, is a moot point.
I guess I don't understand, does, Brian, do you have the capacity to fix it internally?
I have the capacity to issue a non-action letter.
Right.
We have the capacity, should the town manager choose, to, to do some kind of a consent agreement, but I, I don't see that as a clear path in this case. A non-action letter is really the, the, to me, I really boil it down to two choices, but, but again, counsel has given us three, three choices. I can act on a non-action letter. I don't like non-action letters, because they don't, in my opinion, do anything.
They, they do allow the...
Title insurance will...
Title insurance will, will, will...
But it doesn't remove the violation, and there shouldn't even be a violation, because they got permission to do what they did.
Right. But that's why I think you can, I, I, I'm not sure you're required, and this is a legal part, I don't, I don't know, okay? I'll tell you that I've never had a, I've had numerous cases, you see this in driveways, you see this in shared wells, you see this on setbacks, you, I've seen it a hundred times, over thirty years. I have never seen a lender or a title insurance company deny something that's been given a non-action agreement. I've just never seen, I've, I've never seen it as an issue. Non-action is, is as good as, if the town is saying, "We're not gonna touch it," no one's gonna question it.
Yeah, and non-action, I disagree, non-action is, is not good. It may, it might, it might resolve it as far as the title, and of course, that's all the sellers really care about. I, I don't like them, because the violation continues to exist.
And that's probably true, um, but I...
And that violation's there for a future seller.
Well, if it doesn't, once you...
But, but if, well, like, if it's a future seller, then they come to the board for variance, and they say it's a result of the pri, previous owner, and they get past...
Well, here's, here's the difference, in this case, there really isn't a violation other than, if, if not for the fact that the variance didn't get recorded. And, and by doing a non-action letter, it basically says, "Yeah, you're in violation, but you really weren't, because we issued a permit for it."
So that's why, that's why I come back to it's an administrative issue, all we care about is that we, we're acknowledging the mistake, there's a mistake that's out there, it, it, for all intents and purposes, the non-action letter, yeah, it, there's a precedent in the, in the state, for thirty years that I've been doing this, there's at least thirty years out there, that non-action letters are acceptable. Uh, uh, for, for, I've never seen one sued.
Did you do your stop hold?
Uh, I think right now it's three to two, but I'm not...
Well, it was three to one, I don't think you voted.
Uh...
Should bring it back, or to...
I'm, I'm not even saying that you should approve it, I'm just saying, should, should the appeal come back?
It's an only should come back.
Right now it's three to one, that it shouldn't come back.
I don't think it should come back.
Well, three is...
I think if the seller wants, if the seller can sell it with a letter, and the buyer wants to buy it with a letter, and I know it makes Brian cringe, like...
That's all I needed to know, I just needed to, I told them that I would bring it up so that they would have some idea of whether or not, if they, they have anything further to do.
If, if they're happy with the letter, then so be it, but let them know that the other option is to come here, in which case, they're gonna run into trouble.
Are you changing your vote, or are you keeping your vote the way it was?
I mean, I'm in the, I'm in the minority, so it doesn't matter, majority vote.